All right, whenever you're ready, Catherine.
Okay, great. Welcome, everyone. It is 5:37 and well, actually, that says 5:30. We're a little late. I'm calling the District Commission hearing of August 5th, 2025 to order. Commissioners present are myself, Catherine Hunt, Peter Sanborn, John Freeman, and Christopher DeBoer. Today, the commission will be holding a public hearing to review applications in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, extending the suspension of these provisions until June 30th, 2027. We are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the South End Landmark District Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. This hearing is being recorded. All further conversations between commissioners should be audible to the public in attendance until the hearing has adjourned. Are there any media or elected officials currently present? If so, please raise your hand using the Zoom meeting platform and state your name, title, and affiliation. Do we see any representatives of that type?
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, thanks. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. We will repeat these instructions throughout the hearing. And just as a reminder, public comment is taken after we have a motion that is made and before we vote on it. Okay? Thank you. Let's go to the tonight's agenda is design review, then administrative review, advisor review, ratification of the July meeting minutes, staff updates, and adjournment. Also, as a reminder, if you are here for administrative review, we it's not necessary to be here because we won't be looking at each item individually. Okay, shall we go to the first application, which is 380 Columbus Avenue? The proposed work is to replace two one-over-one windows at the first floor. And do we have an applicant here?
Yes, I'm the applicant, but I believe Ed from JB Sash is going to present it.
Okay, terrific.
Ed, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, first of all, for, you know, hosting this meeting. So we would like to change Mr. Wilcox's front two windows on the first floor elevation that you can see in that picture there. I also have a couple of additional photos of this. Yep, exactly, where you were drawing the circle. Essentially, the situation is that Mr. and Mrs. Wilcox have all two over two windows, with the exception of these two front-facing ones. You can see that on the front of the the front facade of 380 has all one over one, but the side and the back of the buildings are all predominantly two over two. So basically, the people who live in this home are sort of stuck with mismatching windows because all of the the windows on the side of their house and all the windows on the back are two over two windows. And of course, you know, much of the South End is two over two. But these front-facing ones are one over one. So Mr. and Mrs. Wilcox would just like all of their windows basically to match on the inside, and the only way to do that is to do two over two. You know, we do understand that the front facade is all one over one, so I'm not really sure what what you do in situations like that. But if you want me to share my screen, I could also share, you know, the side and back views of this same building.
Does that conclude your? Yeah, does that conclude your presentation?
Essentially, it's it's pretty straightforward. You know, we we know that the front facade is all one over one. We just weren't sure if we would be able to potentially switch it to two over two, given that the side and back windows are all one over one.
Sure. Okay, shall we start with Commissioner questions and comments? Peter, would you like to go first?
I have none at this time.
Any comments?
Nope.
Okay, John?
Well, I I was all in on this, but I'm looking at this picture. Can you tell us a little bit more about what we're seeing here?
About the historic photos?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so I mean, this is, of course, been converted. It it appears that it was a it used to be a barber shop on the front floor. It's been converted to residential units. Of course, historically, you know, this property has changed quite a bit. It used to be six over one on the top floors, and then you seem to have some sort of other pattern on the second floor, and then one over one on the first floor. You know, again, since since the building has been redesigned and renovated, it seems like the whole building switched to two over two, with the exception of the front facade. Another kind of note is just that the the two windows we're talking about for Mr. and Mrs. Wilcox are two of the largest windows. So they have a strong preference that they would prefer it to be two over two. And, you know, it's it's definitely potentially possible that some neighbors would in the future in the future, switch to two over two so that the entire building, you know, would be more of that two over two consistent aesthetic.
Do we have evidence that these are original, these six over one windows are original? Who put up this picture? Was that you or was that Rachel?
And I think that picture was included in their application. I think the building was built in 1885. So six over one is conducive to Queen Anne in terms of style for the original. But I don't know if we have any evidence that 100% these were the six over one were original.
But but we don't know any, I mean, these we're talking about the first floor. And Joe, can you go back to the or Ed, can you go back to the current condition photo? Exterior? Yeah, there you go. So I mean, they're all one over one now.
Right.
Chris, comments?
I was just gonna say, 1895, that surprised me that that that's what it's built. But I think we should just go with, you know, I think the two over two is fine. I mean, the six over one looked great. I didn't really attribute them to this building. It looked like more like an 1840 or 1940s, you know, building. But I can see where they've changed like that the large picture window that was on the second floor. I see. Find something that you're two over two and just like stick with it, then allow the Wilcoxes to put in their new windows, and then eventually the other windows will follow suit.
Yeah, John, were you thinking that?
Well, I'm still wondering, Rachel, what else makes this building Queen Anne, other than the date?
So that's the thing is we're not seeing any like extra embellishment, right? Like, we're not seeing a play with Orioles or brickwork. So that's why staff decided to bring this to you. We weren't sure one over one would be most appropriate because this is a modified first, a doubly modified first story as far as we know. But it also looks like the new windows that were put in are kind of longer and almost Italianate in style without the mutton running down the middle. So it's kind of all over the place, and why the commission's feedback would be helpful here.
And there's nothing else on the block that's similar. Is the rest of the block, rest of the block is Victorian era with one over one windows?
I I would actually say from multiple site visits that the majority of the neighborhood is two over two windows.
I meant two over two, sorry.
Yeah, I would say that the majority of the area is two over two windows. I just think that, you know, showing the historic photos versus the photos today, it's such a drastic alteration that, I mean, they even changed some of the masonry openings because the windows used to be, it appears they used to be two wide windows or at least significantly larger than what they are today. And it seems like the masonry, I mean, has to have been redone because there's no door that separates, you know, the the two two wide windows in the historic photo that shows the Woody's Barber Shop. So, you know, it's gone through such an extensive change that you know, it's it's
Yeah.
You've got to give
It's hard to say. I mean, I all I anything else I would say is basically just that, you know, we'd keep the historic seven-eighths mutton bar profile for the two over two for the front facade. And that, you know, we we definitely came into this with the understanding that it might not get approved, and it might. We I honestly wasn't really sure what direction this would go. But, you know, we came in hopeful that, you know, for the sake of not just Mr. and Mrs. Wilcox, but really for everybody. I mean, I I think it's safe to say that most homeowners want the windows in their houses to match. It is a little strange that, you know, you could have all your side windows be two over two, all your back windows be two over two, but whatever room you have in in the home that's facing the front facade would be required to be different. So that's why we were hopeful we could get the two over two approved, but
Are the windows facing the pergola, the new pergola in that little park? Are those two over twos?
Yes, they are. That new park that's almost looking like it's almost finished.
Yeah, it is. I know there are other flat front buildings. They are not from 1895. I think they're infill two-story flat fronts on the same block, which really should be
I think, yeah, just to buy time in there. I think it because I look back at the records at one point, and I believe the front of our building was extended out like a foot and a half or something. So it wasn't original, but it might have been in the 1930s or somewhere. I remember seeing that. And I think that's where the that's when the kind of flat face came in.
Yeah, from the side view, it definitely looks Victorian, and the front is I I mean, Queen Anne is part of Victorian era, but it it looks more like the other. There's a box Oriole all with two over two windows, and there's typical dental detailing. And it does look like something was extended on the front. That's interesting that you say that. This picture would have been after the extension. I think this, but I'm not sure of that.
After it was removed?
Well, it's I don't know, actually. I mean, you can see there's clearly a difference, a line. I'm just looking at the Google, you know, street view.
Well, shall we entertain a motion then?
I I say we do. I I would entertain the motion that we allow the new two over two for the front facade of this building on Columbus Avenue without any other burdens on that.
Excellent. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Peter. We have a motion. It's been seconded. Now shall we hear from any public members who would like to make comment? Sarah? Oh, I'm sorry. I have to read this. Sorry. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand, or you can send your questions to staff via email at southendldc@boston.gov. Now, Sarah, do we see anyone with raised hands, or did we receive any emails about this application?
So we didn't receive any written public comment, and I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, terrific. Then I think, Ed, your hand is raised, but do you have anything?
Oh, sorry. Nope, I'll lower it.
Okay, great, thanks. Then I think we'll vote. Mr. Freeman?
Actually, may I make a comment about my vote? I think there's a new relatively new policy in BLC that we explain our vote.
Really?
I suspect sometimes when we go against staff recommendations where we've been asked at BLC, so I think maybe that should apply here. I think I will vote yes on this for the two over two windows, and I would like to say that normally, the staff comment is a very strong indicator of which way we should vote. In this case, I think that they brought it here because they had questions, and I think the question is really, was this originally Queen Anne? And is there any benefit to the South End or the public or the the district to acquire Queen Anne-type windows with the six over one? And I think I would say my comment is that there is not strong enough evidence to me in what's presented in looking at the existing building that it is Queen Anne was Queen Anne and always had six over six windows. It looks to me like it either was severely altered during the period of significance and and is more Victorian in its aspects or more generalized Victorian. I keep separating the two. There one is a subset of the other. And that the one of the two over two windows, I I think fit it as well, but we still really appreciate our staff and their comments. And I didn't want to also start with Jackie hearing is go against staff comments.
Prepare for the worst. Don't worry.
So I I vote yes.
Uh, thank you, John. Chris?
I I voted aye, sorry.
Yeah, got it, John. Thank you. Chris says aye. Peter?
Aye.
And the chair votes with the motion. So thank you for submitting and we approve the application. Thank you, Ed, and Mr. Paul?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next application is 548 Tremont Street. The proposed work is to remove and replace the existing roof deck. And do we have an applicant representing this?
Yes, I just meet him in the co-host.
Oh, and
send me yourself.
Hey, everyone. Sorry, I wasn't able to unmute myself there, but I'll get on camera now. Yeah, so, hey, everyone. My name is Ralph Tedeschi, and I am the owner of Unit 5 at 548 Tremont Street. And I'm here today to present a roof deck for approval of my unit, as you said. I appreciate everyone's time and all that you do to preserve our neighborhood. So my unit is located on Tremont Street between Hanson and Waltham Street. The roof deck will be located off the back of the building on top of a flat roof. And obviously, you know, the visibility of the roof deck from the street is top of mind. So with that said, it is not visible from Tremont Street nor Hanson Street. However, and those you can see those photos towards the back of the presentation. But that said, it is visible from a relatively small portion of Waltham Street extending from the back of 550 Tremont Street to the start of 99 Waltham Street, where there is free space above the former B and G patio. That said, there is a tree in the immediate area that blocks some of that view. So through this process, I've worked with landmarks, including a site visit with Rachel and Jackie who are on this call and my contractor, where we, you know, adjusted the the railing back in half-foot increments up to a foot and a half to reduce visibility from the street. That said, I am hoping for approval to use the entire existing footprint of the roof deck as it previously existed. So some background, I did, I purchased the unit back in June of 2022 and experienced leaking shortly thereafter that eventually led to the removal of the previous unpermitted roof deck constructed by the previous owners. My hope now is to reconstruct the roof deck to the city's and landmark standards for safety and design and restore our ability to enjoy our outdoor space at the unit. This is my primary unit and have no intention of converting it into, you know, a rental property. So with all that said, I thank you for your time and consideration, and I'm happy to field any questions along with my architect, Eric Zacherson, from Context Workshop, who's here with us as well.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ralph. Let's go to Commissioner comments and questions. John Freeman, want to start off?
Okay, sure. I just didn't understand. You had staff out there, and you weren't able to make the railing put it back far enough to not be visible? I just didn't understand the explanation. If you could go through that again?
Yeah, so we so basically, you set up the mock-up at the, you know, previously existing footprint, so using the full, almost 11 by eight foot footprint, and then we moved it back in half-foot increments up to one and a half feet, at which point the the roof deck was largely non, you know, visible. So that's really the background there.
Okay, I guess my comment would be, I, the staff comments suggest another commissioner site visit, and I think that's probably a good idea because in the field with the commissioners, I think you can work out something that's minimally visible that works for both. But I'm not sure we can have enough information here to do that because it's what I'm seeing is more visible than what we would typically allow. But I I know that on some of the adjacent buildings, there have been roof decks or nearby buildings that have worked. So my comment to the rest of the commission is probably we need a subcommittee.
I would agree, and I want to point out that Commissioner Felicia Jacques has just joined the hearing. So, given that John is recommending a subcommittee, shall we just take that action?
We'll see if everybody else agrees for sure, but
Well, well, yes, that's why I'm asking. Shall we do that?
I just have a question on the current picture. I see two orange pylons up there. That would be the the extremities of the deck?
Correct. That'd be basically the railing.
And then the, is that a dormer that leads out to it? Is that you?
So that is a dormer, but that's not how you access the roof deck. Be right. You can't see it. Yeah, you're not going to be able to see it in these photos.
So the the dormer, back to the back to that picture, is that, no, the one one before back there, right there. So that dormer, how far is it from the pylons?
Uh, roughly eight feet, I believe.
Whoever's controlling this, can we zoom in on that a little bit? Thank you.
Okay. Because it's interesting that the, I mean, well, it's it's original part of the building that it's it's so visible there, and and so that's eight feet. Those pylons are eight feet back from that the the face of that dormer.
Yes.
And that dormer is a full two by two over two window. It it looks like we're just seeing the upper third of it.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted some perspective on that. Thank you.
Okay.
Peter? Any questions?
I am more on the question that Chris was asking. So that is a so there's a dormer on top of a dorm. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean
The view here, we have a dormer
It's like a doghouse dormer.
Roof with with three windows, and then there's a double-window dormer on top of that that's set back.
Right. I mean, it's it's the upper dormer is not really, you know, physically, you know, on top of the actual flat roof. It's really more so into the actual roof itself. If that helps explain.
That's a doghouse dormer that that is is the top floor.
Sorry, say that again?
The 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 three windows there, that's a doghouse dormer that is the top four?
Correct. That's where the living area is.
Yeah, so I see. I see. Now you're going, you walk up some stairs and then down to the the flat roof of that three-window dormer.
Yes.
I'm just trying to get the perspective. Okay.
And do we have any drawings for as part of this?
We do. So the the first, I want to say, probably five or six pages are architectural drawings.
So the application is to replace the existing deck. Is that correct?
It was an unpermitted deck.
Well, is that gone now?
That is gone now.
There's no deck now.
Oh.
That just seemed to fit the closest description from like the dropdown, you know, list.
Was the existing death deck visible? Were there any photos of that? I mean,
Yeah, you can see it on Google. It was huge.
Oh, okay.
You can see almost the whole railing.
Yeah, I don't have photos myself from the street. Wasn't, you know, obviously in my mind back then, but I did provide photos of the previous roof deck lower in the presentation.
Ah, okay. Felicia, did you have any questions?
Uh, no, just that I would I would just sort of concur with with John that it's probably going to be more of a you know, sort of artistic view, but that probably a subcommittee would be most able to figure that out.
I I think you'll get a better result with a subcommittee, so I think it works better for the owner, too.
Agreed. So shall we have a motion?
I I move that we set this off to a subcommittee as soon as possible for this applicant, so we could get him a decision.
Appreciate that.
Felicia, did you second?
I second, yes.
Okay, great. So we have a motion. It's been seconded. We'll go to public comment.
Well, normal, excuse me. Normally, we name the subcommittee members as part of the motion.
Well, I was going to do that after, but I get, I'm sorry. You're right. You're right, Peter. Who would like to?
I would like to sit on that, please.
Okay, Chris. Sorry, I'm coughing. Would someone else? I'm happy to volunteer if no one else can do it.
If 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 we think that it can be scheduled in August, I'm I'm happy to do it. I'm
Yeah.
Okay, great. So Krista Board and Felicia will form the subcommittee.
Thank you. And the mock-up is still up, so I'm I'm ready whenever, and obviously, we can take that offline.
Okay, good. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in, cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand, or you can send your questions to staff via email at southendldc@boston.gov. Are we seeing any public comments, Sarah?
We didn't receive any written public comment, and I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, terrific. Then we are ready for a vote. Mr. Sanborn?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Felicia?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair votes with a motion, so we will have a subcommittee, which will be arranged. And staff will coordinate that with the applicant. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thanks a lot. Moving along to 619 Massachusetts Avenue, the proposed work is to remove and replace an existing roof deck. Do we have an applicant representative here? Jeff Knox?
Yes, that's me. I am the owner of the fourth unit of 619 Massachusetts Avenue. Thank you all for your time tonight and your work in this committee. So, starting here, oh, pardon me?
I just said terrific. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, starting here, just with an orientation to the property and the streets that are in question. So you see the star at 619 Massachusetts Avenue. We're sort of at the south and west edge of the South End Landmarks District. The relevant streets here are Massachusetts Avenue primarily and Shawna. So on the next slide here, you'll see detail about 619 Massachusetts Avenue. Roof deck has existed at 619 Massachusetts Avenue since at least 1986, when it was permitted and constructed as follows the 1983 designation of the South End Landmark District. It's received the prior approval of this commission as well. The the proposal here is to maintain the roof deck in the format specified by the 86 plan just through required repairs to the underlying roof. The existing roof deck is not visible from Massachusetts Avenue per SELDC inspection. Thank you to Rachel for her time in making the site visit. The roof, while not visible from Massachusetts Avenue, is visible from Shawna Avenue. That's primarily due to sightlines that were cleared by the city's construction of an abutting seven-story modernist-style city housing community, and that's what you can see here. The adjoining row of houses supports about 12 other deck and patio spaces with varying compliance to SELDC guidelines, as you'll see in this image. The proposed roof deck would maintain the current format, again, as described in the 86 plan. Decking materials will be updated in line with SELDC guidelines, as you may have seen in the prior image. The current deck uses white painted wooden rails and a privacy wall that's due to be dismantled and replaced with black metal rails that communicate more the style of a fire escape. The existing 42-inch railings, which were not visible from Massachusetts Avenue, will be replaced by railings of a similar height, ensuring that the deck remains invisible to Massachusetts Avenue. ensuring that the deck remains invisible to Massachusetts Avenue. And that, uh, concludes the presentation. Uh, thank you all again.
Excellent, thanks, Jeff. We'll go to commissioner questions and comments. Mr. Freeman?
Okay, you don't always have to start with me.
I, well, I'm looking.
If somebody else would like, go ahead.
Actually, I'll make a comment, okay? I went over there this afternoon and it, it's true, you don't see anything from Mass Ave unless you back up all the way into that horrible illegal Dunkin' Donuts parking lot. So, that's what I could see, and it's clear that if there were no parking lot there, you would never see anything from Mass Ave. And what you do see is this, the white trellis stuff, so what you're doing is, is a great, great improvement. Thank you. Uh, Chris, would you like to go?
So you're removing that, that wall in the back, is that correct? And it's just going to be a forty-two or forty-two inch high railing?
That's correct. Yeah, no, we've, uh, we've lived in the apartment since about twenty twenty, and this was the pre-existing, uh, roof deck. I think there's been a complaint actually against the wall. Um, but yes, no, that's planned to come down and replacing only with the forty-two inch railings all the way around.
Yeah, it almost looks precarious when you look at it that way. I'm very how those are back there. Now, I, I know, but, yeah, okay, that's, that's pretty much my own thing. It's been there, um, it's been approved. I think that, uh, our line is quite clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, great. Felicia?
No comment.
Okay, Peter?
Um, it's a question to staff. This backs up onto Comet Place, does it not?
Jupiter?
I. Does back up.
Comet, Comet, yes.
And is that a public street?
So it is not treated as a public street, so we would not review it um, as if it was a, a public way.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Uh, did we cover everybody? John?
Um, yeah, I, I concur with whoever said it earlier. It's a pre-approved configuration that I think had, uh, uh, non-approved elements added to it, so we're moving back into the, uh, config, uh, to a configuration and also a material that is approvable. Um, so I think this is approvable, but I would also recommend that they, when you're doing the work on the deck, if you can keep something up just so uh, that we don't get, or the staff doesn't get lots of calls from neighbors, that'd be great.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, great, I think, sorry, I.
Just gonna make a motion?
Yes, thank you.
I, before, before I do have another question, the railing, right, are these going to be vertical pickets or are they horizontal?
The, we're planning to use, uh, vertical supporting black metal railings.
Can we see the details? Do you have? Rachel, do we have enough detail on this, or do you want drawings?
You could include that in there.
I would like an updated detail, just because the image of the rails shows, um, like for the stairs, hang on, let me.
Right.
This doesn't look quite right. If we could get a detail that shows vertical rails with a flat metal top, um, staff would prefer that.
So I'm proposing an amendment to whoever made the motion that we include the drawing submitted to staff.
You, you can make that motion. I didn't, I didn't start it.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't have a motion yet.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve this, uh, with the proviso that drawing showing the proper configuration of railing and type of railing, and, uh, also that existing elements be painted black, uh, be all submitted to staff before the final staff release, final approval.
I'll second.
Great. So we have a motion by John Freeman, seconded by Peter Sanborn. We'll now take public comment. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand, or you can send your questions to staff via email at southendldc@boston.gov. Any public comments, Sarah?
We did not receive any written public comment, and I don't see any hands raised.
Terrific, then I think we're ready for a vote. Peter?
Aye.
Felicia?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Chair votes with a motion, so motion is accepted, and thank you for submitting.
Thank you all for your time.
Excellent, thanks, Jeff. So moving along to the next application, one seven zero West Canton Street. Proposed work is to remove the existing front door and install a new custom wood door, remove the existing metal fence at the front garden, and replace it with a new historically appropriate metal fence.
And note there are additional items on administrative review.
Yes, thank you, Rachel. Would that be the, uh, mechanical units on the roof?
Correct, the mechanical units on the roof, um, and the roof deck was updated this morning with staff, and we found it to be minimally visible.
Oh, excellent. Okay, great. Do we have a representative for this application?
Yes, Rachel, can I share my screen? Do you have the latest that I sent you today, or?
I think I do, but you're always welcome to share your screen.
Would you like to state your name for the?
Zach Malay with Pittman Worley Architects.
Great, thank you, go ahead.
Okay, so we're here for today is we're looking to, in addition to all the other administrative review things that Rachel pointed out, we're looking to replace the existing wood entry door here, um, and replace that with a new, take the two top panels of the doors, remove those and make those glass, uh, light doors and leave the bottom two panels. Um, and again, this is something that is fairly consistent as you go up and down West Canton Street and the rest of the neighborhood. Um, and it's also something that the owners are looking to do just for a safety, um, point of view from being inside, being able to see who's outside, um, at the door. Um, and then as we go to the next page, and this page, I'm drawing two, just sort of illustrates what we're looking to do. So you'll see drawing one on the left, the existing, um, we're, we're really keeping the, the four panels. It's just the top two that we're looking to make those glass versus wood. So here, we'll, we're going to keep the existing profile of the door and just take the top two panels and make those glass. And then the next page here, the existing front fence is just a very simple thirty-inch um, plain picket fence that we are going to replace with something that's a little bit more kind with the neighborhood. So Rachel and Jackie were kind enough to send around some examples of what's consistent on that street and in that part of the neighborhood. Um, and one of them was at one seventy-six West Canton. So, we did a little bit of research in one of the catalogs that was provided, and we've decided to kind of go forward with more of the, the original Baroque example on the left here. And that's the roof deck that is part of administration.
Okay.
That's it for today.
Excellent. Thank you, Zach. We'll, uh, go to commissioner comments, questions. Chris?
Uh, again, very familiar with West Canton, uh, as well, and there's a lot of examples of the four panel doors with either solid wood panel or the glass. So if, if this is done, uh, respectfully, I'm, I think that's absolutely fine.
Any comment on the, uh, proposed fence?
Uh, the fence as well, I know that we have a fence subcommittee that needs to be, but that's very appropriate for, again, for this block. And then we'll have a flat rail on the top, or we'll have the, the, uh.
It'll, it'll have not a completely flat rail, um, it'll have a little bit of, um.
The rope and then the, the pinnacle in the middle of it, like a triangle?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I knew that.
Excellent. Uh, Peter?
Um, staying on this photo, is the building, the one that's partially shown to the right, or is?
No, this, this is just a photo that Rachel and Jackie provided me as an example of an appropriate fence that would be consistent on that street. So this is actually not our building. Our building is on the previous page.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, could you go back, sorry, could you go back? There we are. Thank you.
So our building.
It's the painted brick building.
Right.
Which unfortunately is not part of your application.
Because it's, clearly it's an obviously a, an end building. Are you intending to install a gate with the fence?
Um, no, I have not intended to. There's, right now, there's a small opening as you walk in under that areaway. There's a small little three-foot opening that um, we're thinking we could just leave that opening and not put a gate at all. So there's, right now, there's no gate going from the sidewalk into that areaway. Um, but I haven't, and the owners, I don't think have thought about that. They're on, so if they have a comment on that.
Okay, um, are you planning to return the fence?
Yes, the fence will, yes, the fence will return on both sides.
Okay, um, what is the, what is the condition of the entry doors?
The front entry doors at the parlor level here?
Right, the ones you're proposing to replace.
Right now, they're in fairly good condition. I mean, they would have to be removed and, you know, they'd have to be restored to some extent. Um, you know, we're gonna, we would put new hardware on there anyways, so um, the thought was we could take them out, look at them, or and, and alter them, or we would just remove them entirely and match the, the paneling profile that's there and have a new custom door made to match, you know, almost mimic what's there, except the top two would just be glass versus wood. So those are kind of the two options that we'll, we're looking to address.
Okay, our guidelines and standards say that where possible, original material should be retained. Do you believe these are the original doors?
Um, it's hard to tell. Um, if you look at that photo, zoom into that, uh, the existing photo, it's a little hard to tell if those are actually the wood or the glass. They look like they are wood doors. But again, we're looking to, you know, this is also a, a safety concern for the owners of just being inside and not having to, you know, not seeing who's out at that door. And again, there's, it's fairly consistent in the neighborhood of having those top two panels become glass lights.
There are also numerous examples where there are solid doors without lacing, so.
I mean.
That's all. Thank you, Catherine.
Okay, thanks, Peter. Uh, Felicia?
Just in keeping with Pi- Peter's questions, um, to the door in the red brick townhouse, that, that is literally next door, right? That's not some sort of side by side, right?
Yes, that's literally, that's, yes, that is next door.
And, um, you know, whether, it's hard to know if there are, if there's a people or anything there, but, um, I guess my question would be, um, is there any reason why you wouldn't, uh, repair or restore those doors? And if the answer is, um, yes, what is the material that you're proposing for the new door? Along with the sort of the transparency and the type of, uh, glass lights that you're proposing?
So the new doors would be wood doors, or we would do a composite, um, you know, a solid wood, solid composite door, um.
Like a mahogany door or something right now? Does that?
Yeah, yeah. And then the two, top two glass lights, they would be clear, insulated. If they end up becoming frosted, you know, that's also a discussion for us to have, but again, this, this comes back down to, you know, we've replaced a lot of doors in the neighborhood, um, with these glass light doors, and this is not anything new that I've proposed, um, coming forwards.
I guess I would, but.
Yeah, I guess I would just say, you know, composite door would not be pref- yeah, preferred material.
We would do a solid wood door. We would do a solid wood door.
Maybe a solid mahogany door.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, that's where you were going with it. And if I may just re- revisit what I said too, because I.
Can I jump in first?
Here, John.
I haven't commented yet.
No, I'm waiting.
I got it first, put me at the end.
I'm all set.
I, I, I'm gonna, can, may I jump in here?
Please.
So, so I, I'm gonna be harsh first, and then you'll loophole. Um, Peter is absolutely right. Our regulations say that existing, uh, uh, historic material that can be repaired or saved absolutely has to remain. Uh, there's nothing that says it has to be similar to the neighborhood and nothing that says it has to match down the street. All of that is irrelevant. It's that this door appears to be a historic door. It appears to be the original door to the building, and our regulations say all original material must be retained. Now, here's the loophole. Many years ago, we had an application similar to this, where the applicant came in and said what they want to do is turn the doors, put the original material as shutters, so that, so that they would open and there'd be a glazed panel that could be opened. Um, and they argued that the, that all the original material was retained. I don't actually remember the resolution of that. I don't remember what, where it was or anything, but that's the only way I could possibly see you redoing this application and having to go through the rest of the commission, uh, to, to possibly get any kind of glazed element into these doors, in my opinion.
Okay.
So there. I, can I revisit what I said as, as well? Because now I, my, my whole view on this is to be, you know, uh, listen to what our client, our, our applicants have to say and try to be very cognizant of their worries, their concerns and everything, while being true to what we need to be true to. And it would kill me to pay, pull these doors out and put glass in them, because if they're original doors, they're strong, they work. I kind of, I'm being a hypocrite right now, but I'm correcting my hypocrisy. Um, if they're solid doors, I say keep the solid doors. If they were horrible, replace them with mahogany doors. Um, if you are concerned about safety in this, walk to the parlor and look out the window and see who's on the front porch. That seems a lot safer to me than having glass that could be broken in, for instance. Um, so those are my comments right there. I do that all the time, because I, you know, look out the window to see who's there in my parlor.
Thanks, Chris.
Um, I, I have a comment about the railing too. Uh, we have to have drawings for all of these things. I don't think we can approve them from some similar pictures. So I, it sounds like the right thing is being done, but we have to have drawings that show the exact configuration that's being put in place, submitted to staff. That's my other comment.
Sure.
That's not so hard to do.
Uh, Rachel, did you want to say something? Oh, no, that's a public comment. Forgive me.
Actually, I think Rachel's one of the owners.
Rachel's one of the owners, yeah.
Oh, okay, great.
Yeah, hang on, I can have her.
Rachel?
Great, Rachel, you feel the talk now?
Thank you, sorry, I couldn't unmute. Thanks so much, Rachel. Um, thank you, everyone, for the time and the comments and hear the feedback. I think, um, my husband and I have lived in the South End for ten years. We love living here. We're excited to continue to raise our family. We have three extremely young children, and safety is, uh, of the utmost importance to us, and, you know, safety in the neighborhood is a, a big topic right now, as we're all seeing in the, in the news, and absolutely hear you that we could come around and look at the parlor and come around, but I just am envisioning my five-year-old who loves to open the door when people come to our home. Asking him to go around and look in the parlor door before then going and opening is just scary to me as a mom of young kids in the neighborhood, and that is. scary to me as a mom of young kids in the neighborhood, and that is why this um, ask is coming from us. We really believe that it is for the safety of our children that we can before opening the door and not requiring to walk around to the living room to a small child's um, is just extremely important. And so that's our perspective on the glass and why we come here today to ask that. I can do that. I'm an adult, but you know, asking a five year old to do that is a little more challenging.
Okay, are we ready for a motion?
Peter is on mute.
Anyone?
Peter's speaking, but he's on mute.
Peter, we can't hear you.
Sorry, sorry. Um, I have another question, um. I think it's under our purview. The drawings appear to show exterior lighting on flanking the doorway, is that correct? And if so, is that subject to our view, Rachel?
Did you say that again, Peter?
These drawings appear to show light.
Yes, the lighting, lighting is exempt from our review.
We can recommend.
We can recommend, but it's listed as exempt.
And they can't make more pulls.
Yeah, they have to be installed through the existing Mason region.
Okay, thank you.
But if you have a recommendation, Peter, you can certainly make it.
Um, I don't have one at this time, so.
Okay, uh, once again, I'll ask if someone would like to make a motion.
Before we go to the motion, um, I just want to go through this a little bit, just a little bit more. Um, if the doors were to be removed and replaced with a mahogany door that, you know, we're keeping the same historic material and we were just to do the glass above it. I mean, is that is that, I didn't want to say a hell no, but I, I'm just trying to walk this dog a little bit further here. And what the actual possibilities here are, other than doing some sort of shutter.
Regulations do not allow that unless you can absolutely prove that the doors are so far beyond repair that they have to be replaced, and then the regulations would require replacement in the same configuration. Sorry, that just, that's what it is. Rachel, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, nobody's apologized.
Yeah. Okay. Shall we try again?
I'll make a motion to deny this without prejudice. And that means uh, that you can come back with a proposal of a different uh, system, but if, uh, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the doors. Uh, and uh, without making another application, you can come back and propose something different, or show us that the doors are beyond prepare, or show us that they're not original doors. All of which would be acceptable. Uh, for the railing, for the garden railing, I think I'm uh, proposing and I, I'm not sure I heard everything, so commissioners correct me. I'll accept that as proven as presented with the proviso that complete drawings of the full configuration, including the top rail and the curb and how they all are put together are submitted to staff.
I second that.
Great, so we have a motion by John Freeman, seconded by Christopher DeBoer. We are ready for public comment. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand, or you can send your questions to staff via email at southendldc@boston.gov. Sarah, how we doing?
We didn't receive any written public comment, and I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, there being no public comment, we will take a vote. Chris?
Aye.
Felicia?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And the chair votes with a motion, so passed. Thank you. Moving on to thirty-two Hanson Street. The proposed work is to remove marble sills at the sidewalk. Install new eight inch wide continuous granite still or sill? To match. Pardon?
I think it should be sill.
I think so too. To match granite base.
Granite sill to match the granite base.
Fire out new wall.
Fur.
What is that?
It should be fur out.
Fur out?
Yeah, yeah.
Drop the E off of fire.
Fur.
Fur out new, what does fur out mean?
Uh, you mean drop out, like? Build it out.
Doesn't it?
Uh, okay, new wall over existing brick, right on the right side of the entry and apply stucco. Repair and patch the existing stucco wall on the left side of the entry and ceiling. Paint deep navy Benjamin Moore CSP dash six thirty after midnight. Do we have the applicant here?
Yes, uh, thank you, Catherine Mark, Dan Brocklin, Mark Design, um, thank you commissioners. Um, Rachel, I have, I had sent you an updated presentation which limits it to the non admin review items. Do you mind if I share?
Yeah, you can share your screen.
And hopefully, um, hopefully my explanation is more clear than the write-up we just.
Okay, Mark, take it away. Thanks.
Sorry, my, my wheel is spinning. Hold on a sec. I think I shared the wrong screen. I was already, come on. Okay, so there are um, are two items. One is uh, to remove these um, interesting marble bills that are set into the sidewalk in front of the windows at the, the sidewalk level. And the other item um, refers to some proposals in the stoop area. Uh, so this is thirty-two Hanson, um, between Ringgold and Tremont Street. I do page down. Uh, so here's the uh, some photos of the thirty-two, the, the subject property in the middle and to the left is thirty Hanson, to the right is thirty-four, just showing the context, pretty consistent, um, building along this, this part of Hanson. Again, just a close up of elevation drawing and a close up of the, the, the front facade. Um, he- here's some photos of the existing stoop area to the, to the left. Left image shows uh, thirty-two Hanson next to thirty-four. And then the middle photo is a, sort of a blow up thirty-two Hanson, and number three, the right photo is, is a blow up the doors. Um, again, a lot of these items were admin review, um, but the proposal for, for the stoop area is to restore the existing doors, keeping them wood finish. Um, I forget what's the admin level, but I replaced the light fixture in kind. Um, refurbished some door hardware and install new door hardware. On the left side.
Hey, Mark, yeah, just, um, so what we're focusing on with the entryway is just talking about the stucco that you're planning to remove uh, and put back.
Okay, great, so.
Yeah.
Currently, um, facing the door on the left side of the, of the entryway is, is a stucco finish. The ceiling has a stucco finish. The right side is, is brick. What we're proposing is to, to fur that brick wall out maybe two inches and finish it with a stucco finish to match the ceiling and the left side. And paint those three surfaces that really, really deep, almost black color. Um, we think originally that the, the sort of entry area might have had, first of all, might have had uh, like a transom at the street facade. Um, but regardless, would have had paneling inside, um, similar to thirty-four. We're proposing to add stucco to the finish, the, the brick surface is not finished currently. Paint it dark, so it is more, at least aesthetically in keeping with what's at number thirty-four. Should we stay on the topic, or should I go to the rest, go to the marble conversation?
I, I think you can go to the sill, whatever the sill is.
So this is fun. Um, in front of, um, you can see here the middle photo to the right, just flipped off is the, is the stoop, the entry stoop that stepped up to the, to the, to the home. These middle two windows have these interesting, what looked like Carrera marble pieces into the sidewalk. I thought they were fireplaces. I think the scale is wrong. Um, for that, I think that, they, at first I thought there would be two halves to the, the the face. Uh, I think that would make for a very large fireplace. Um, I, so Rachel, do you want to read what um, South End Historical Society mentioned? Is that, is this where you jumped in with that?
I can. Yeah, so we thought this was really interesting and something we've never really seen before, so we reached out to the South End Historical Society. Um, and they connected with their historian, um, and their historian thinks that the marble was likely salvaged from the facade of a building that was demolished. Um, he doesn't think that the shape looks like any fireplace design that he's seen. Um, one candidate where they could have come from is the Odd Fellows Hall, which burned down in nineteen thirty-two, which was at the intersection of East Berkeley and Tremont, um, which is not too far from Hanson Street. Um, while it's likely they aren't original to the house, um, they are a reminder of a time in the South End's history when scavenging stone from a demolished building for a window well fit a lot of the homeowners' budgets.
Hmm. So, um, I don't know if we want to do a deep dive. I pulled up a couple images of the Odd Fellows Hall. Um, it, it's, it's got more of a Gothic shape to the, to the um, window elements.
Hmm.
I, you know, without getting out my loupe or magnifying glass, I didn't see that particular shape as part of any element on the facade. Um, I thought it might be this piece here, but the curve didn't match regardless, we, we, without any knowing who, you know, being around eighty-nine, ninety years ago, this is kind of speculation. Uh, from our, from our point of view, it is interesting, you know, we, we love things that are interesting or like, you know, the, the index of what's, how these buildings have been changed over time. We don't think this is a very good execution. Especially having a white marble with sort of carved elements on a horizontal surface exposed in New England, doesn't make a lot of sense. Um, the marble is chipped. Um, it's, it's just not a, a great execution. We'd like to sort of tidy it up, um, and make it more in keeping with the street as well as uh, just a more intentional installation.
Do you have any close up pictures of it?
This is kind of as close as I get. I can zoom in, but um.
Is it in good shape, other than chips?
Um, I, I, I would say no, I mean, the, the, there's post pieces that are broken, ear is broken. It was either broken to, to, to attach to the building, or it was just over time has been um, you know, falling into disrepair. It's, 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 it, it, it's clearly not a, a window well, uh, uh, material. So what, is what we're sort of.
Do we know when brick sidewalks were done on this street?
I don't know. I do know that, um, I looked at the, we have uh, the, the street survey from the seventies. You can't tell that the, that big old car is in the way from all these photos. Um, you can't tell if these were there in the seventies or, or not.
Hmm. It's too bad.
Or a proposal would be to, similar to this, just have a, a clean granite piece along the front of the building that, that abuts with the existing granite.
And what would you do?
Water table. Um, we could pack them up and send them to your, your way. We would, we could keep some, uh, we, we knew this was going to be a conversation, um. We're open to ideas. If anybody has creative, creative ideas to have this, make this uh, tailored, a little more intentional. Um, because, you know, it is an interesting piece of history, at least at least twenty, thirty, forty, maybe eighty years old, not sure. Um, it's just not the right application for this, I think.
Do you feel that it's a safety hazard in any way? Is it slippery? Is it a trip, uh, trip and fall hazard?
Um, I think it would be, uh, yeah, it's pretty close to the building, so unless you're skirting along the building, um, you're probably fine, but you know, it's a polished marble. It's already got some algae or moths on it. It is, it is slippery for sure, and it's um, it's, it's got like, um, you know, like, like the carved panel in it, it's some got some recess and some divots in it, which is not smooth like the brick would be.
Were those original window wells, did they go below the sidewalk? I saw an application at one of the houses next door. It looks like.
I didn't.
Far about.
We didn't see evidence from the inside. Um, it's hard to tell because there's, there's not brick at this part of the building, the inside. Um, I suspect that maybe the, the larger window might have been taller, but probably not the two, two middle ones. Um, most of the buildings, most of the buildings do not have window wells, a couple do. That being said, the topography kind of changes, so. But you're like, these have window wells, I'm not sure.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, this, this, this might have been. I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Hmm. Had, did you have more to present, Mark?
Uh, no, it's just, it's just the marble sill and the um, the stoop area, the stucco and the stoop.
The stucco, yeah, okay, well, shall we go ahead if anyone else has some comments, additional questions?
I have some, I have some questions about the stucco and, and why you chose to go more stucco instead of more brick. Uh, and also, is that hand railing, that lovely hand railing going to stay, or are you looking for something different?
Um, the hand railing is approved to be replaced under admin review. That's, we're going to place it with a black metal rail.
Okay, okay.
And um, we your first question about sticking with stucco, um, I, I'm much, we haven't done any uh, uh, test holes, but I believe that the wall to the left is not a brick wall. I think i- if it was initially paneled, I think it's a wood framed wall. So we would have to put in new brick i- i- if the thought was to make it all brick instead of all stucco. Um, same thought with the ceiling, that was probably a, a paneled surface.
Why not panel it then?
W- w- we're open to that, certainly. We'll have to talk to, um, it's a little more pricey, but um, could, could do so. A painted I, I would, if, if we went paneling, I would push to do a painted surface, just because it would be hard to match the wood finish of the existing doors.
Mm-hmm.
I think maybe a, a test hole in that, uh, to see if there was a wooden wall there, or if it is brick, might answer some questions for us as well, but I mean, my, my choice was if we think it was a panel to do a, a, a panel, uh, you know, entrances, get, get it back to that nice panel bit. I agree. I think even a simple panel is better. I'm not sure the stucco is that common. I mean, we certainly see it now, but it always seems like it's a patch to me. And covering brick, brick on the right looks like it's finished brick. Is it, isn't it? I mean, I cannot, I can't really see it well in your picture, but it looks like it's the same as the brick on the front of the building.
I, I don't think it is. The corting looks like it was left, left of the fine mason, did it? Preparing the face, the face here next to the downspout to the return here.
So then I would say that probably was a panel too. So they probably stripped off the panel, if that's, I can't really see, so I'll take your word for it, Mark, because you're here a lot. Um, on the, but the other wall, if it's not brick, maybe they stuccoed that, and they, you know, panel was probably rotting just like the door. But I'd much rather see paneling go back here, consistent with the vocabulary of the, of the time in the street and.
We, 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 we're, we're not going to push the stuff. I think a paneling is a really nice, nice solution. Um, it, it's certainly more detailed than the stucco, so we, we're definitely, we're on board with that.
Cool.
Well, uh, the brick. So are we saying it's not a good idea to cover up that brick wall with stucco? I would think no.
No, what we're saying, but I, I couldn't tell if it was finished brick or uh, if it's not origi- not brick that was originally meant to be exposed. And Mark, who, who's been around here enough and I, you know, he's made plenty of applications to us, says it's not finished brick, and I'm willing to take his word for that. Uh, so it was probably a paneled wall on both sides. And I think what uh, both Chris and I have suggested is that it would be that they panel it instead of putting stucco on it. And painted, I think is fine. The rest of them are painted.
Yeah, I will say that that brick wall is pretty messy. I would have looked at that today.
Great, thank you.
The grouting is a mess. Wouldn't you agree, Mark?
Yeah, I'm not sure if you can see my zoom in here, but um, the face brick has much tighter joints, and then that, that side brick looks like.
Exactly, yes.
That I'm sure.
Yeah.
That, that was done, that was done after lunch in there.
Friday afternoon.
Okay, did we miss anyone? Uh, Felicia? Peter, you did you get a chance to speak?
No, I agree that this the stucco would not be the preferred solution, but if we can go paneled and with it being painted, I think I would be fine with that.
Right, okay.
Catherine, yeah, so I agree about the paneling. I'd also like to return to the sidewalk.
Yes, please.
Is that public sidewalk all the way to the building front?
Yes, the property line is at the building face.
So really, the owner has no no authority to remove that. Is that correct?
That's a very good question. I can't. I'm not sure the Public Works Department would mind if this changed. I'm not sure. But
Yeah, I understand. The public, the public might not mind, but there's a legal right to do that.
Yeah, and they would at least need an application. I we got our wrists slapped on something like that. So I think it does need to bring, it's probably not only the Public Works, but what's it called?
Public Improvements Commission.
Yes, the PIC. And good luck with that. They've got, I think, a nine one writing list.
But certainly the property owner put that in, didn't they? I mean, I can't believe the Public Works Department put that stuff in there.
Yeah, I mean, a hundred years ago or eighty. No, I'm just saying PIC will need an application technically. So it's not our purview. We don't care. We should still make our decision, but.
Okay, then good. I think we're ready for a motion.
Well, I'm I'm not sure how to think about these, and I was hoping Peter has some good enlightened comments.
Well, he just.
I understand the the it doesn't seem to be a trip and fall hazard. The sidewalk itself, which was not installed correctly, so clearly done by Public Works, is more of a problem of a trip and fall than here. I was trying to give Mark it out, but I think it's probably not as not as bad a problem. We have some evidence that there is a significant history behind it, but not very clear evidence, just, you know, probably or could have been. Could we possibly try to ask for more information on this? And and continue this one piece and see if somebody can come up with some more information. As the because other, you know, the sort of hearsay and guessing by the historian, I don't think is enough for us to to absolutely retain them. But if but they are unique and an interesting piece of history. So I don't want to take them out if, in fact, that is all accurate.
So who of whom are we asking this additional research?
I think we'd ask the owner or Mark or whoever to to see what else they could find out about it, if anything. And I think perhaps go back. Is is the historian still John Neal? Rachel?
I want to say maybe.
Yes, yes, he is.
Let's let's let him look into it because he's incredibly thorough. He's a really smart guy.
He's very thorough.
Could we give? Could we have a month to do that, Mark?
Yeah, certainly. I I know John Neal. I can reach out to him. I just wonder if we can we pardon my phrasing here, can we have our cake and eat it too? If this is not your purview, is this where I'd say back off?
No, I think it is our purview.
But even though it's a public works.
Yeah, they would require an applica- in my experience, they would require an application.
I I wonder, and this is thinking out loud, I wonder if there's a application for a homeowner to do minor improvements for safety or that I can sneak this into once a design determination from the commission is held. I'm just thinking out loud, not wanting to go through the PIC process.
I don't know. It was a commercial building where we got our hands slapped.
So I don't want to.
Yeah, no, no, it's fine. It's I mean, it was no big deal. It was like, oh, jeez, you know. So, but I've just and you know, I wouldn't want you to get your hands slapped as well. No, so I'm just putting it out there. It's not a PIC is not our purview. Your coordination PIC is totally up to you. Has nothing to do with us. I'm just saying from our standpoint, I think it would behoove us to find out a little more information because I I'd hate to find out down, you know, two months from now that these really are significant. People know about them, that there is a real history there. And if we if it's as simple as asking John Neal to look into it and waiting, you know, till our next hearing or waiting, you know, if you come back with something to staff, I I would be willing to remand it to them as well.
So could we proceed with part of this then?
Whoever'd like. Make a motion or does everybody agree? I mean, I
Sure.
That's just my opinion. There are other commissioners that.
Well, I think in in concurrence with staff comments, I think it's a good point, so.
I guess my thought would be to deny this portion of it without prejudice. Then if the applicant is really, really wants to pursue this, then we've given them direction as to what would be the basis for our reconsideration.
Sure. Well, I think you could.
Rather than rather than just have it as an open open continuance.
Well, why don't you complete that with and make it a motion with the other part of the application, Peter?
Okay, I move that we deny the application without prejudice for both the changes to the sidewalk, the removal of the marble elements and the installation of plaster stucco on the right side of the door entryway. And that we encourage the applicant to do the entryway treatment in paneling on both the right, left and ceiling portions of the entry recessed entryway.
Okay, I'd like to refine that a little bit.
Sure.
I think perhaps we deny without prejudice the part about the marble, but we approve the entry changes. But only if it involves putting up paneling. I'm not doing this very well either, I suppose. I don't want to deny without prejudice the entire thing. I think we can approve the the improvements to the entryway, provided that it's paneling on the left rather than stucco.
But that's not the application.
They can alter it.
The application includes. Why can't we split it up?
The application is to do stucco on the right side, as I understand it.
Yeah, and we're saying, no, you can't do that. So why can't we make a motion that tells them they can proceed if they do such and such? Which is to install paneling on both.
My understanding is that we do not have the we don't have the authority to instruct them what to do.
But they kind of agreed to it.
That's my understanding. My understanding is we can accept an application. We can accept an application with provisos, or we can deny an application in some.
Couldn't we accept it with the provisos that they do wood paneling instead of stucco?
I think we've done that before.
I think we have too.
Yeah, we've done that with fencing and so on, telling them that they have to follow an historic, you know, model or something. So I.
Okay, that's contrary, that's fine. That's fine. It's contrary to my understanding.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Well, I guess we have a motion, but for for Rachel, do we need to refine that a little bit or?
So Peter made a motion. Catherine offered an amendment. Peter can accept or deny Catherine's amendment, which was to she accepted the denial without prejudice regarding the removal of the marble sills. But she offered an approval with provisos regarding the entryway changes to a wood panel instead of stucco. So Peter can choose to accept it and or he can deny it. And then we would have to vote on Peter's first motion.
Right.
I accept the amendment.
Yeah, and the wood paneling would be on both sides, left and.
And the ceiling.
Okay, and then just to clarify for procedure, then John Freeman seconded the motion.
Okay. So we have a motion? It's been seconded? That was a tough one.
I'd like to. Catherine, I'm sorry. Sorry, I'd like to further amend the motion then.
Amend the amendment?
Yes. That the design detail of the paneling be submitted to staff for approval.
Ah, very good.
Thank you, Peter. Good, good ad.
Yeah, except that. Good. Okay, I think we're ready for public comment.
Okay, Mark, I'm going to share my screen now.
Thank you, Mark.
Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand, or you can send your questions to staff via email at southendldc@boston.gov. Do we see any public comment? Sarah, any emails on this one?
No, we didn't receive any written public comment, and I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, terrific. So we will now vote. John?
Yes. I.
Peter?
Hi.
Felicia?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
And the chair votes with emotion. So it is passed. And thank you, Mark. That was that was a tough one, but.
Thank you. This is, I'll be curious what we find out about those. Thank you, thank you all.
That'll be really interesting. We look forward to finding out what you found. Okay.
Rachel, I'll reach out to you. I've got some questions about what just happened.
Thank you, Mark. Feel free to give it to me.
Thanks very much.
Yeah, thank you.
The next application is for one seventy-nine West Brookline Street. The proposed work is to replace the existing transom glass with a stained glass panel. And do we have a representative here for this application? I see Marcus Springer. Would you like to give your name for the record?
Yes, hello, I'm Marcus Springer, Springer Architects. This project is a continuation of an earlier application. The the project's currently under construction. It's an eighteen fifty house that we are restoring inside and out over the whole building. So we hadn't had an opportunity to design the transom glass above the front doors. So that's that's what this application pertains to. The client would like to replace the current transom glass with a with a stained glass panel. And we are working with Jim Anderson, stained glass. He's worked in the area over the last forty years, doing a number of these panels. And he's come up with his design, which we would like to present to you.
Okay.
How do I get going here?
I have your slides. You can say next, but you can also.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, yeah. Sorry. So I just got next slide. Yes, thank you. Thanks, Rachel. This is the existing front door inside and out. So it is that this is the the transom in question, which basically has a kind of painted one seventy-nine on it. Next, next photo. Oh, so I think this is this is the earlier one. So do you want me to? Do you want me to share my screen, Rachel?
Yeah, that's fine. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry, let me see here. Sorry about that. That was that's the old one. Okay, you all see that?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so then the so I went around the neighborhood to look at. These are these are just some of the in locally on West Canton and West Brookline and Greenwich. So these are some transom piece that Jim has done before. So, you know, with the textured glass and the address kind of in the middle. So this is the kind of thing that's that's locally around. And this is the one they like the most. This one's on Greenwich Park. This is number twenty-five Greenwich Park with a number of different textured glasses and, you know, more subtle. So this is Jim. So we want to have a kind of turquoise border glass and a turquoise border around the number. And then the leaves and the rest of the design would be different textured glass, kind of like this. That's that's what they would look like. So in the in the door, we're also doing the glass panels door, which was approved in an earlier application. So it would look like that. This textured glass with a kind of hint of color turquoise border with some red jewels in it. And that's that is it.
Marcus, I'm going to jump in with a question because when I was over there this afternoon and looking at the construction that's now in place, as you said, in, you know, in progress. You're not planning on shortening those doors. Those doors stay exactly as they are, correct?
Yes, that's right. The front doors, you mean?
The front doors, yes.
Yeah, yes. The front doors are currently over at Old Bostonian, and they're being they're being restored.
Oh.
They're they're going to be as is, yes. The original doors, but we're we're doing glass in 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 these kind of in these panels. And these panels here are being changed to glass.
Oh, how.
So was that part of the application?
That was part of the earlier application.
And that's been.
And that that was approved. I can show you.
That's okay. That's okay. I don't.
Yeah, well, that's interesting. Because the original doors from, we found in nineteen seventy-two photograph from the South End Historical archive, which had the glass panels in the door.
Oh, okay.
And I can show you that if you'd like.
I I think we can go ahead. That's important to know, though. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Want to make sure we're consistent.
Yeah. John, do you want to go ahead with any comments, questions?
I would rather go last on this.
Okay, great. Chris?
So my first question is going to be, is the is the transom glass right now? Is that original or has it been replaced and then regilded with the name, the numbers?
You know, I'm not sure, and I couldn't find any evidence of that. The the nineteen seventy-two picture seems to show, but you know, it's very dark, seems to show that same transom.
I know that if it's if it's original, it's supposed to stay. And what was the propensity for people to put any of the stained glass when these were built with the custom and people they could put in their own stained glass element if they wanted?
Yeah, there was one, two doors down at one seventy-five, which they also looked at as something they were interested in. But as they say, I couldn't find any histor-, you know, the, the only historical photo I could find of the building was that nineteen seventy-two picture.
Looking at the, at the construction of it, Marcus, do you think it's original?
Um, I don't think it is, like the one, the, it, it, the, the deckle and the one seventy-nine doesn't, doesn't seem to me to be the, the same. And the, the doors aren't, the front doors aren't original either. So, you know, they've been, they've been replaced with the solid doors from the glass doors. So I, I don't know if there, there was other work done at that time.
Could you go back to that photograph, Marcus, or, or Rachel?
The nineteen seventy-two one, or the, or the other?
Of the current doors, or the current.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, as current as you have.
Yes. Oops, there.
And, and it's just clear glass, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Chris, were you finished?
No, I was just saying you could kind of tell if it's original or not, depending on how much the woodwork around it has been messed up with. Um, and, and the, the transom, I mean, it, it could be put on as, as a temporary, I mean, is that, if it was a stained glass window, like, and, and we didn't want to re- remove the, if we found that the original one was original, could that stained glass be put on in front of? As like a, almost like a storm window? That's a staff question, I guess.
Jim was mentioning he's done that before.
Yeah. It was done in my building, that, that, apparently they took it when they moved in the seventies and it's full of Siamese cats.
Yeah.
I didn't know that was appropriate for me. And Jim did it too.
All set then? Shall we move to Felicia? Comments, questions?
No, I mean, I think we're, um, I think you're saying that there are no examples of this kind of proposed transom window in the neighborhood, and there is no, we're having a hard time finding any evidence of it having been in the past? Is that what?
There, there's lots of examples of transom stains in the neighborhood.
My question is, I don't know if there were any original stained glass.
Oh, I see what you mean. Yeah, right, right.
So, um, the commission can note, um, we did look into one seventy-five West Brooklyn Street, um, and couldn't find any evidence of that being an original or nonoriginal transom glass. Um, in addition to West Brookline Street, um, I did do a site visit there. Uh, and the majority did look similar to what one seventy-nine West Brookline looks like. Nonetheless, like, it is important to note that stained glass is a feature of some streets along, um, the South End. Um, but within this particular street, um, it varied.
Thanks, Jackie. All set, Felicia?
All set.
Okay, great. Uh, Peter?
Yeah, um, I concur with the sentiment. I think the, while the design is beautiful, I understand the desire possibly of the owners. Um, buildings of this era typically did not have stained glass. They were much simpler. It was only in the late nineteenth century, Edwardian and Queen Anne, where um, stained glass was routinely introduced. So, um, I can't support this application. As tasteful as the design is.
Okay, John, you're up now.
Um, I think what Peter is saying is correct, and I think a strict reading of our regulations is correct, that we can't a- allow replacement of this. Oh, I should have said, uh, we also, we work with Jim Anderson also, so I don't think that's a conflict of interest, but I'm supposed to declare it. Um, I do believe, though, uh, and we had an application like this fairly recently, that we do not have purview over something that's on the inside of the glass. So I think that we could allow an application to put the stained glass on the interior face of the glass, using the glass as a protection. And I also, having, we've done some stained glass work, believe that in this climate with the climate change and increased aci- acidity, that, uh, for long duration, stained glass is better off protected and on the inside faces of, uh, uh, preferably, you know, um, what is it? The pure glass panels that have, uh, but it's a pure glass panel. So I think, uh, removal of the number would be okay, in my opinion, and the glass, stained glass put on the inside in a way that it could be removed and is therefore, um, uh, able to be changed back easily to the original config-, what appears to be the original configuration. Unless we had evidence that this building had stained glass as part of it.
We, we would be amenable to that for sure. We, we could, we could take the original one out and keep it and do what you're saying, put a piece of glass in front of the stained glass.
Uh, John, I, just so I understand, you said removal of the number. How, how's that handled?
Well, I think the number's not part of the historic building. I don't, I don't, I think street numbers sometimes change. But I don't, it's just on there, right? It's not part of.
It's like a deckle, yeah.
Yeah, like a deckle, that's what you said.
But the number would be incorporated in this interior stained glass?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay.
And the existing window that is there right now, the existing transom that is removed and replaced with glass, or that is, that remains?
I was saying that it should remain if possible. I don't think it's original glazing, and it's probably been re-glazed at some point, although it'd be nice if Marcus could let us know for sure. But certainly, all of the other material, the woodwork, should be, um, you know, glass breaks. Sometimes glass gets broken. So we allow replacement of broken glass. But this, but we would not allow the stained glass to be now made part of that transom. That's the part that I'm saying Peter is absolutely correct about. Um, in my opinion, though, and we had disagreement and an app, similar application previously. Um, and I think, uh, John and Medea, who's not here tonight, feel strongly that we can't allow the replacement of it. I think, uh, I don't know, Rachel, John said, sent me a note saying that he sub- submitted comments on this. I don't know if it's legal for you to read that or not. But in my opinion, if they ca-, if they kept it the way it is and put the stained glass on the inside of it in, in a way that was not permanent and could be reversible, thank you, that's what I was looking for, um, then it's out of our purview. But that's just my opinion.
Well, that seems to be a fine compromise.
Yeah, we, we would be open to that, for sure.
And, and just to reiterate, it couldn't be applied like a storm window and on the outside?
No, because that's, that's a good, hmm. No, I don't, well, I don't think that'd be the right way to handle the stained glass myself. All is, this, this lettered glass is very vulnerable.
Yeah, Jim says he does that all the time. He does, uh, he does a kind of, uh, a, a piece of glass in front of the stained glass.
He's done that for us.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're, we're ready for a motion.
I just, before we have one, I just wanted be doubly sure that um, we're all on the same page, or John and, and Marcus are on the same page, because what Marcus said initially, as I heard it, was different from what John said. So Marcus, are, I think the motion we're moving to is that the existing transom will stay intact. Wood, frame, and glass, the decal can be removed. But, um.
That's what I understand as well.
Okay, thank you.
And then, and then the, the stained glass behind that.
Right. Okay, good. Anyone ready?
I, Peter, why, I'd rather you make this.
I would rather not, because I was with John about the, I was in the same position as John was about the interior stained glass, so.
All right, I'll.
I, I actually, I, I understand, we don't have the, we don't have a purview. But if they do this on it, on the interior, but I also don't want to encourage it. So I would prefer not.
Okay, I'll, if somebody else wants to, I'll, I'll jump in. So I'll make a motion, um, to, I, I've, given the previous discussion, I'm not sure if we should deny the existing or just say that we will approve the repl-, the, let me say, how it's said.
Installation.
Alright, so the, well, what is, what we're saying is gonna happen is that, so we'll deny without prejudice the removal of existing historic transom elements, period. I believe, it's my opinion, and I will say in this motion, that stained glass installed on the inside of the existing transom is outside of our purview. And would be allowed, but we would still, uh, prefer an application to staff showing that it, or at least, uh, information to staff showing how it's installed in a non-permanent reversible way. Is that enough of a motion for you, Rachel and Jackie?
Yeah, I think that is now without prejudice is the way to go, because you're basically allowing this because you're saying it's outside of our purview to install behind the existing glass. Right?
Okay. All right, and we'll allow the removal of the deckle.
Do we have a second?
I seconded it.
Oh, thank you, Chris. Okay, we have a motion. It's been seconded. We'll now ask for public comment.
Give me one quick second to share my.
Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are called, if you are calling in, I'm sorry, and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand, or you can send your questions to staff via email at southendldc@boston.gov.
Hey.
Do we see any hands? Oh, sorry, Rachel. Sarah?
Uh, Sarah stepped away briefly. We.
Oh, thank you.
Have any emails in regards to this application, and I'm not seeing any raised hands.
Okay, terrific. Then we shall vote. Peter?
Aye.
Felicia?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair votes with a motion. Thank you, Marcus, for presenting and coming in front of us.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks a lot. Good luck. Okay, movie, whoa, don't we have one more, uh, application at?
Uh, no, the application was withdrawn from the agenda today. There was an error and the wrong address was submitted, so they will have to come next month.
This is the advisory, or that's still?
Uh, no, it's the last one on the agenda that was removed today, which was to Compton Street.
Well, so that was an incorrect address? What is the correct address?
It is fourteen Rutland Street.
Oh, that's a big difference.
It is, but we, um, are gonna see it in September.
So, so there's no action being taken at Two Compton Street?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, Rachel.
You're welcome.
So is there an advisory?
There is still an advisory, but we do administrative review first.
Oh, okay. So administrative review? Am I supposed to read this? Or do we just vote on administrative review?
You can, if you would like, um, but administrative review generally are what staff has reviewed. Um, they find that they meet the criteria and applicable guidelines.
Correct. So shall we ex- vote on accepting the administrative review?
I'm, we accept the administrative review, review?
I'll second.
Excellent. Shall we vote? Peter?
Aye.
Felicia?
Hi.
Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. So administrative review is approved. Thank you, Rachel, for all your hard work and putting that together. So now we have an advisory review. And, uh, do we have some sort of description and address for this, or? Uh, it's fifty-two Plimpton Street?
And the proposed project is to demolish existing building and build new.
So it's in the protection area?
But if we, if it's, we find that it's a significant existing building and we allow its demolition, then we review the new application as if it were a district building.
That is correct.
But the context is still a protection area.
Right. So do we have a representative here for the project?
Yes. Hi, I'm Catherine Tulian. I am the architect, uh, of the project, principal at Stack Architecture. Uh, I'm also accompanied by, uh, Josh Brandt and, um, who is, uh, one of the developers, uh, on the project. Who is, as I understand, trying to get unmuted. So he can.
Able to unmute himself now.
Oh, he's able to unmute himself now, okay. Uh.
Uh, hi, guys. Josh Brandt, nice to meet you.
Great.
Hey, there's Josh.
Thanks. Would you like to go ahead with your presentation?
Uh, absolutely. Um, so I'm gonna start by giving a brief overview of the project that's proposed and why we're here tonight. And then I'm going to turn it over to Catherine to run through the bulk of the presentation.
Great.
Uh, uh, so, uh, uh, I am the developer of the project. I'm the owner of Stacking Company. We're a construction company in Boston, and my partner, Matt Kiefer, is also on the line, who is a development attorney here. And I think that what we wanted to start with is that we did not come to be here and specifically proposing demolition of, uh, the building on Plimpton Street lightly or without a fair amount of thought. Uh, that we are preservationists at heart and that, uh, uh, renovating old buildings brings us a lot of joy. But as you will see, there's some very real limitations to the existing building on Plimpton Street uh, uh, that make, uh, uh, its preservation, um, uh, uh, very, very challenging. Um, the building as proposed new is forty-four residential units. And, uh, Catherine, could you go to the next slide, please? Um, uh, uh, is, uh, forty-four residential units, um, uh, uh, including eight affordable artist lived workspaces. Uh, that's one more than the seven required, uh, under the inclusionary development policy. Uh, is a six-story building, uh, under seventy feet height-wise. And in terms of zoning, we are compliant with all the dimensional requirements for floor area ratio and height. We will need to go to the zoning board for the proposed new building for parking and a couple of other minor issues, but they are not dimensional related. Uh, the built, proposed building also includes a ground level uh, art gallery and community space, the exact programming of which we are working with the community with right now uh, to optimize. Uh, the building is gonna be highly, highly sustainable, uh, made of mass timber or cross-laminated timber, uh, designed to passive house standards and will be, uh, uh, in all likelihood equipped with solar panels, but at a bare minimum solar ready. Um, uh, uh, so we're very excited to, to present the project overall and our uh, uh, rationale for how we did come to the conclusion here that demolition is the best option in our minds for this site. Uh, but we are very interested and eager to hear the input from landmarks uh, before we proceed too much further, uh, uh, in our process, because we have uh, filed our Article eighty small project review submission, and we are through our comment period uh, uh, with a lot of neighborhood support. Uh, but again, there is no project here without any demolition, and so we're happy to have the audience with you guys here tonight.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Josh. Uh, so as I mentioned, my name is Catherine Tulian, I'm the architect of the proposed project, and I will run through the rest of the presentation. So the site in in question is fifty-two and fifty-six Plimpton Street. Um, this is right on the center of the Southern Protection Area. Um, and between um is is, you know, in Plimpton Street between um Albany and Harrison Avenue. The existing structures, um, uh, the the site, the site uh of eleven thousand square feet um is comprised of uh set from several existing parcels under common ownership, which extend from Plimpton to Wareham Street. Um, the site is occupied currently by two buildings, fifty to fifty-two Plimpton Street is a three-story uh timber and brick structure built around eighteen ninety-five, and fifty-six Plimpton Street is a one-story brick service garage uh of utilitarian character, which um we think is built around nineteen twenty. Um, the uh only inventory form uh that we uh found on the Macris was for fifty-two Plimpton, and you can see it right here. And then on the lower left, you can see the extent of the site and the location of the two existing structures. Fifty-two Plimpton, the three-story building being located right in the middle of the site in question. Uh, just to refresh your memory, because this same site was um being uh requested for for approval for a different project uh several years ago on twenty twenty-two. Um, a proposal by Transom Real Estate um was uh suggesting the building that you see on the screen um that actually um encompass from Plimpton Street all the way to uh Wareham Street across.
Hi, sorry, sorry to interrupt. Um, you know that I'm sharing my screen, right? Not you?
Oh, it says here that I'm sharing the screen. Is that not right? You're seeing?
But see, what I see is the previous proposal.
Previous proposal, right? Yes. I think, I think I'm sharing, Rachel.
That's so weird, because, okay, my apologies for interrupting.
Uh, okay, okay. Um, so this, this, this is just to re- 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 refresh your memory um about the site and the location in this version uh in this previous version that was was never built. Um, uh although it was approved, the the building uh was all the way to the facades on Wareham Street, only the facades uh were um left remaining. Um, so the demolition evaluation criteria, you know it better than anyone else, uh you know, it it um, it regards the existing physical condition of the structures, the the cost of reuse being prohibitive um and demolition uh of the building uh allowing for uh um a higher contribution to the protection area being those, the the criteria um for for approval of demolition. Here in the picture, you can see the two structures um that we're referring to. Fifty-two Plimpton being on the left. So the existing physical condition of the structures, um the structure of fifty-two Plimpton exhibits visible signs of structural distress, including cracked masonry and extensive repointing that indicates past settlement and ongoing instability. The brick facade has been stripped of original architectural detailing over the years, um diminishing the building's historic character and integrity. The rear facade of fifty-two Plimpton um has been rebuilt with cinder blocks um in in uh in a great portion of it, you can see that in the upper left uh image. Interior conditions uh reflect long-term neglect with significant water infiltration, deterioration, framing, and evidence of mold and moisture damage. Um, and uh we did a geotech report um that confirmed that the building lacks foundation piles and uh make it structurally vulnerable and incapable of supporting additional loads. Um, regarding cost and feasibility of reuse, the um the the existing buildings um having sufficient FAR being at one point one of the total four point oh allowed on the site, um their location and layout make vertical and horizontal expansion unworkable. Cut upgrades will further reduce usable space and cost. The fact that fifty-two Plimpton, the three-story building is is right in the center of the site complicates this situation being that um you would have to grow on on all sides of it. Uh, Sifert compliance, we are in the Costford Resilient Overlay District. The existing, which which means that you have to be four feet above the existing ground level. Uh, the existing building is only three feet above, so it's one foot below the minimum required elevation. Raising the building would require major structural intervention, adding significant cost without solving other limitations. Um, incompatible floor heights, the project relies on CLT construction to meet the seventy-foot height limit. The existing building irregular floor-to-floor heights and misaligned windows uh make reuse unfeasible since the proposed floors will not align with the required elevation of the of the floors of the proposed building in order to um stay under the seventy-foot threshold. You can see that on this elevation where we have superimposed the facade of fifty-two Plimpton um over the facade of the proposed building, and you can see the dashlines uh showing how the proposed floor lines would cut across the existing windows. Uh, parking constraints below grade, parking is essential for feasibility. The existing uh shallow foundations obstruct and and the uh what would be an efficient basement layout required uh underpinning would cost nearly as much as new construction while still leaving code and access issues unresolved. Um, foundation reinforcement cost, strengthening the foundation to support a new structural system uh through underpinning, micro piles or both would require invasive technically complex and prohibitively expensive interventions that are not really justified by the resulting building performance. Um, a facade preservation also is not viable because retaining only the facade, uh as I mentioned before, will not be compatible with a CLT floor-to-floor heights that that are required for the new construction uh due to floor misalignment and and conflicts with the window apertures. Um, so these, these are the main reasons why, um, you know, we conclude that the reuse of the structure is financially and and functionally not feasible. Uh, we we think that the building limitations uh preclude any viable redevelopment path short of full replacement. And so we propose the project that you see on the screen, um, as as George mentioned initially, these are forty-four new um uh residential units with eight um affordable units on the ground floor, the affordable units are one more than what is required, we're required to add seven, and um and we're adding eight, and these are uh large um duplex art studios to have an art community um be be kind of uh uh members of of this area to activate uh this street and in in the South End corridor in in general. The building steps back at the entry and creates a gallery that, you know, opens up all the way to the back um where there is an open interior courtyard um between the this building on Plimpton and the existing buildings on Wareham Street. So there will be light coming in through the back of the building. The project enhances enhances the public realm, uh, you know, widening the sidewalks. Currently, there are no uh uh existing sidewalks on on the on the site uh in front of um uh fifty-two Plimpton. Um, and so we would, this this would bring a big improvement to uh adding sidewalks and plantings and new trees um and and creating uh with the art gallery kind of an an active space for the community. Um, the building will be constructed with mass timber, as I mentioned. Um, and you know, it will be passive house, it would include a hundred percent electric systems and be solar ready, so um a very uh environmentally forward uh building. Um, as I mentioned, we will be rebuilding the sidewalks, um, reestablish safe accessible pedestrian corridor. Um, you can see here the the site plan with how the building kind of peels off from the street, kind of opening up, um creating uh an outdoor foyer um that also encompasses an ADA ramp that wraps around the uh gallery space. Um, the there will be permanent pavers uh to help with groundwater management and and rainwater on the street. The zoning compliance and setbacks, the building conforms to, you know, seventy-foot high limit. Um, and in general, um is dimensionally is uh complying with all the zoning requirements. It has six stories with duplex units on the ground floor, though, so there is a mezzanine uh on all the affordable units. And stays within an FAR of four. There is also, you can see on the elevation, the building uh is set back from the uh forty-two Plimpton Street, the neighboring building, seventeen feet to allow for the windows of those of that building to uh remain open to the site, um as well as the windows of the building we're proposing. And we have a twenty-foot setback on the backyard, you can see on the section in the bottom, how the building is um set back from the buildings on uh sixty-five Wareham Street. And you can see the dimension of the building to seventy-six Wareham on the other side of the block, how it, you know, remains within a scale that is much more appropriate to the neighborhood. The building materials we're proposing are masonry to clad the facade, the masonry material we're proposing is a brick shingle. The is is the same brick masonry material that is applied as a shingle, which creates a beautiful shadow line uh instead of a grout. And this allows for the for the brick to be uh applied to the building uh to the CLT directly um and conform to the structural capacity of the CLT. Um, um, the other, other um aspects of the of the uh building exterior is a uh an emphasis on warmth and the use of wood and limestone, which is uh expressed on the CLT ceilings that will remain exposed. So the 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 aspect of wood will be um part of the character, so it's gonna be a very warm building, including on the lobby entry where the ceiling of that lobby is also gonna be exposed wood. And with that, I'll thank you so much for um hearing our presentation, and I invite your comments, your questions. We are eager to hear what you have to say.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. Do we, uh, commissioners want to address the uh thoughts about the demolition first?
Sure. That's probably appropriate.
Do you wanna jump in, John, or do you wanna? Go later?
Um, so I I will make my comments, but of, but uh at the end, I want Rachel's comment. It's my understanding that the previous approval of the demolition uh goes with the property and does set a precedent for us, but was contingent upon the approval or or linked to the approval of the other design. So I'm not a hundred percent sure that uh whether it's still in effect or not, but I think in this case, the uh parameters and the standards that we looked at, that uh the applicant put up so clearly still apply, and that if we think that this project uh contributes to the common good and to the better uh quality of the South End and this area of the South End Protection Area, then we can uh approve the demolition again. I think it does, without having gone into a lot of uh questions about the proposed project. Uh, housing is highly needed in this area, um and everywhere, but uh and and a project that would build more housing units is uh obviously gonna contribute to the community. We've also looked at these buildings before, these industrial areas, small buildings, and generally found every time that we've tried to save one, they're in terrible shape. Uh, it's very hard to save, uh very, uh and this one is not on a major street. Um, so in my opinion, I think that we could uh allow for the demolition of this building, but remember that if we do that, uh we do have to review the the proposed building later to a standard that uh we review a build, a proposal within the district. That doesn't mean it has to follow all the district rules, it's a different context. But we review it to that standard, not just the height, massing uh landscape.
We understand that.
Can I jump in with a quick question for the team? It, just in the way of background, is this a different development team from that original design?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Different team, thank you. Great, okay. Uh, shall we go to Peter? Uh, thoughts on the demolition, or?
Um, they aren't very well formed yet, quite frankly. I wasn't a member of the Kish- Commission at the time. Um, the prior approval was made. Uh, frankly, I I'd like to have the benefit of having a not tonight necessarily, but having a benefit of having a fuller understanding of the commission's thinking in their um approval back in, I guess, not twenty twenty-two. When I'm assuming that the Wareham Street buildings were the dominant consideration at that time, so I I understand, I think the developer has made a cogent case here, but at the same time it's sad to see the loss of this warehouse district which seems to be disappearing on us incrementally. And two buildings, this would be the third site. So I guess my comments are open-ended tonight about the demolition of this.
Well, I wanna ask Rachel if she has anything to say uh regarding what John Freeman said in his introduction there to this.
Uh, in terms of uh.
Has this expired, the previous demolition, and is it?
Yes, yeah, that project has um expired, um and this is a separate project from that project.
Okay, so it's moved.
Correct.
Okay, great. Well, uh, gosh, I mean, it is just an advisory, do we want to we don't have to get into any great detail or make any decision here, obviously, but uh Felicia, Chris, any thoughts that may differ from what?
I agree with, I agree with Peter, it it is sad to see buildings like this go, they have so much character and they add a lot of warmth and depth to just the majority housing that we have. But I I see the 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 real need of of housing and of utilizing this spot that's got something right in the middle of it that could be expanded both ways and up. It makes a lot of sense from our needs today and and building something that could use, it would just, I think it is, yeah. It is sad to lose something old like this that really has some character, whether it's character for Halloween night or for some old man fixing a car in that garage. It's character. And and maybe just we can think about it, that some of the elements I like about this are those, you know, the the hooks or the 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 pulley systems that extend over the big doors, you know, those big openings that say industrial. Maybe some of those elements can be brought into the new design that Stack comes up with. I mean, I like the design, but maybe some things can be added to it to to give a little character of of what this building shows.
Felicia, any comments on on the demo, the existing buildings?
From what I hear, you know, tonight's advisory was sort of trying to follow along the path of demolition has been approved and here's a new, here's a new project. Will they have to come in for both a new demo delay?
Yep.
Yeah.
So so they
And design review. And so we are not really, you know, I I guess that process hasn't really started.
So so it the South End Landmark District has the ability to approve the did not approve the demolition of this building. It doesn't have to go through BLC. It only goes through the South End because it's within the protection area, which the South End Landmarks Commission governs. So they will come back with an application to demo the building and an application for a new building design, which we would look at both and depending on how you guys choose to review the building as contributing or not, and then if you decide to apply the policy to have a more stringent design review, then you would proceed in that manner.
Oh, sorry, Felicia.
That's okay. So I mean, that's, you know, that was my question. I look forward to, you know, the project coming forward through the normal process.
Great.
Rachel, you said that if we decide to apply the policy, I thought it wasn't optional. I thought if we approved the demolition, we had to review.
So if you approve it, so if you look at the policy, the language specifically says, let me pull it up really quick. So I say it exactly verbatim. Right. It's loading. So the very last paragraph of the South End Landmark District area Protection Area Demolition Policy says, if demolition is approved, the commission could review new construction using the same criteria that applies within the district. So you could. It's not required.
And could I just?
Generally, the commission does.
And and can I just add in Felicia, something to your point that we are definitely presuming demolition here. Obviously, required in order to execute the project, given the nature of the process and that the landmarks review happens after zoning review. The reason why we're here tonight is to more or less take the temperature on on the commission. I'm not looking for an approval or a denial, but you know, are we chasing a windmill here? Or because this is obviously a gating issue to 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 being able to execute the project overall.
Thank you. I I don't think you're chasing a gating issue. So again, look forward to sort of seeing the application.
And Joshua or Katrill, this image at the top left, which street is that on?
The back.
This this is the back of the Plington Street building.
The back, yeah.
It's a garage that comes around, yeah.
Excellent. Yeah, I mean, we all have fondness for these old warehouse buildings, but when it gets to a point where they're just falling apart, I mean, you can only do so much. So anyway, yeah, I agree with what Felicia just said, you know. I don't know why.
I think then the heat, the sounds like the temperature, Josh, is that what we do want to go through the design process, you know, with you, whereas like I had some ideas. I'm sure other people have some ideas. We, you know, want to be very realistic with with what needs to happen.
So do we want to address?
We would welcome that for sure.
Do we want to go into some of the things that are being proposed? For example, I think it's terrific that you're proposing mass timber and you know, the
Is that tonight or is that the design?
We can, no, we can.
We're only, we're only making general comments to give them an idea of of what they can expect. That's it, you know.
It would be really helpful for the applicants if you have some design suggestions to share it with them here. So that way, when they come forward with a full designer view application, they have addressed your concerns and they can be closer to getting an approvable project.
Yeah, exactly. If somebody says, oh, that's not going to fly, you know, that's important to hear. But if you if we have something to say, for example, I think, you know, the mass timber idea is a great idea and the fact that it's six stories, it's within the height limitation. It's fantastic. They're not coming in here and proposing thirteen stories, which is refreshing. So.
One of the things I said, I don't know if you heard it, Josh, but I I like the characteristics of those old industrial buildings, whether it's the the round top windows with the big heavy steel, you know, shutters that they had on them. Those, I mean, those were just elements of this area that were very part of it. You know, they've got the 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 lift pulleys and the double doors. Those are just elements. I think that if they can be worked in and not look Disney-esque, I say more power to you.
Yeah, that's that's an interesting comment, Chris. John, what do you think?
So I I think this appears to be a very nice project. I think we need to know a lot more about it. The thing that I found find most I'm getting an echo now, too. I'm going to turn down volume and see if that helps. Does somebody have something on that has delay on it?
I don't know where that's coming from.
The thing that I find most interesting and also I think we need more information on is the proposed material. It's, to me, it's a new material. This, it's a shingle like it's a clay fired shingle that is larger than probably twice, two or three times the size of a brick. We can't really see it in this context here. I don't know of any place in the South End or the Protection Area where this material has been used. But it also, it's it looks to me like a fascinating material and it looks beautiful. And I'd love to see it, but it has very specific detailing requirements. And I'm I'm concerned that it might limit the way that the the window openings and the corners especially are detailed to to something that would start to to vary too much from the vocabulary in the South End. I mean, in the, well, the Protection Area of the South End. So what I would advise is that if they want to use materials that that they give us a lot more information on it, you know, prob maybe even a mockup if we could or see what the options are and what if, say, for example, that that Chris, Chris's comments about the shapes of the arches or the parapets or the, if that can be incorporated or if this material totally precludes that. So that's one question. And and I and I hope you'll really try hard because I think it's really interesting. The other thing is that the 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 units at the top of the building, I'm not sure what material that is, if it's the same material or a different color or if it's, but if it's a different material, we'd like to know what that is and what differentiates it. Mechanical, also if there's any mechanical units or mechanical penthouse that is visible in addition to these penthouses. Typically, penthouses on these buildings were built of a different material. Very often, it was a metal. So, you know, is that something that can be made consistent? Also, it looks to me like there's a railing as if and green materials that that come all the way out to the face of the building. So I'm wondering if that's something that the commission needs to look more carefully at because typically we ask that in the district balconies and roof decks are less visible, and this incorporates a lot of that into both of them. I'm sure it's part of the green element. And in the Protection Area, that might be more allowable, but it's something that the commission will have to consider. So more input from you on it. Also, I noticed that the material changes looking going into the balconies, how that corner works or if that's appropriate to this material would be something that I'd want to know more information about. And that everyone else knows that one of my pet peeves is big soffits that nobody thinks about. And so I think the large soffit area that we're seeing here needs more information, more detail potentially if and at least more thought, you know, so many architects, young, old, good and bad, somehow they miss this office. And they're such a large part of the the design element. So that's something I'd like to know more about. I know landscape is our purview, whether we choose to to review this at the district level or not, and John and Medeo is not here tonight. I'm sure he'll have a lot to say about the the greenscaping and also the hardscaping. More information about how your your walk into the gallery works is something that has come up in previous projects and been very important to to getting right because just, you know, concrete rising up into the building has generally not been something that we want to see. It's not not, and I'm not sure that's what you're showing here. So that's something I think that that we should put on the list. I'm sure there's other things that I'm just not catching at this moment.
John, when you mentioned soffits, you referring to the ceiling of the entry?
Yes, absolutely. Also, the soffits, the balconies for that matter, but absolutely the big soffit there that it just looks like a smooth surface with some pinholes lights in it in this rendering. And I get it, you know, this is just a rendering. You're just getting started. I'm not criticizing it. I'm saying it's something that we will, we will want to know more about and ask you to look at.
Great.
I'd like to build a little bit on what Chris said about referencing, you know, the elements of design in the in the type of building that was there or that may be demolished. And sometimes we often go further than that when a new building replaces something that is of historic nature and it has been demolished. Sometimes the actual, some of the actual materials or elements of that demolished structure are used either either in perhaps, and especially since this is an artist gallery that you're proposing, something could be perhaps a bit of sculpture or something referencing what was demolished. I mean, it's an eighteen ninety-five structure. It it's very, very obviously historic and important to the neighborhood. So that's something to consider, and it has been done successfully in in the past, in especially in this area. Something to think about.
Nice point, Catherine. Maybe those doors could be grand opening to the studio or something that the bay doors.
Or, you know, I'm sure sure someone will have some ideas, but you want to be careful about that material when it's demolished. There may be elements that that could be preserved and and used in some respect.
Use them on sidewalks on Hanson Street. Come on.
Yeah. Okay, anyone else?
Catherine, I'd like to offer a couple of comments on the design. First of all, I think it's a it's a very handsome design, but I totally echo what Chris and you said. To me, this this building gives no reference to an industrial or warehouse area. It's a beautiful building by the looks, but I think the design has to evolve substantially to be more in context with where it's going to be located. I also think you need to rework the ramp. I know this is a very specific comment. I'm troubled by the fact that the wheelchair entrance is the side of the building, and I think you need to rework the ramp so that the wheelchair entrance is in the front with the main entrance or move the main entrance over to the side that the wheelchair entrance should not be subordinate to the main entry. I understand you've got slope issues and elevation issues, but that's a challenge.
All this feedback is is very well received. There's a lot here. We're going to take it into consideration. If I could just hit on a couple of things specifically, the proposed Peterson cover brick, it is a lot lighter weight than full traditional brick. And in terms of marrying it to our cross laminated timber structure, that there's a relationship there in terms of sort of already incurring a relatively sizable premium on our structural cost for the cross laminated timber and going to full cavity brick would then introduce the need for a meaningful supplemental steel as well. So that's, you know, all of the feedback is where I see, but I just wanted to give a little bit of thinking in terms of us trying to be speak with with a masonry language without necessarily using a brick that's going to create a lot of other structural complications. Peter, your comment about the ramp is very well received. We've already done a number of iterations with planning department and Sarah Long, and this is something that with the new sea fraud and the need to have the ground floor before feet above the sidewalk, this is not the only project that is sort of wrangling with, okay, how do you make the accessible entrance not subordinate, but also avoid having a front entry be a ramp because, Katra, correct me if I'm wrong, that the ramp is something like fifty feet long. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes. And, you know, in this case, it's also the main entry of the gallery component, which is a public component. This is a gallery where the artists that are in the building and and other artists would exhibit their work and it would be open to to the public would be would be, I would would be an active place. And the entry of that gallery is also through the same ramp. The gallery also opens to the back, so there is somewhat of an of kind of like an art courtyard in the back that would also allow for the work of the artist to be exhibited there. And and so we, you know, as as we try many ways to and we're going, we're going to continue trying to 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 get a better solution for it. But where where the project was crystallized for submission, the gallery was, the the ramp was a sort of a kind of like wrapping around the gallery in a way to to kind of be utilized also as a way to observe the art that is in there. It's almost like celebrating the ramp and putting it front front stage. But we will continue as we get into the design of the project to to find the best way possible to to unify the ramp is something that is very, very concerning for us and and of most importance.
And just one other, one other thing that has come up in sort of the initial design commentary here about the referencing of more of a factory building and perhaps incorporating any physical elements from that building before demolition. All of that feedback is is very well received and we will certainly probably sooner rather than later inventory what items are salvageable from the existing building. And then Katrill and his team will get to work on figuring out where and how they can they can incorporate.
Excellent. Well, I think everyone has commented. We certainly look forward to seeing you when you come back to us with an actual application. That'll be very exciting. Now, we do have several people on the call, and I think we may take public comment at this point. Does everyone agree if there if there are folks who want to comment? I'm not seeing any hands. Is Sarah back with us?
Yes, I'm here. I don't see any hands raised either.
And no letters or emails submitted?
No.
Okay, well. I I think unless anyone has anything further, thank you both.
Thank you.
Josh and Katrill.
Thank you, everybody.
For coming in, we certainly appreciate your For coming in, we certainly appreciate your sharing your, your thoughts on this. It'll be a great project and we look forward, as I said, to seeing you.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you so much. We look forward to working with you to make something that, uh, uh, everybody, uh, all stakeholders really love here.
Terrific. Sounds wonderful. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so we move on, uh, Rachel, to staff updates, is that next? Oh no, ratification of meeting minutes?
I have a, make a, uh, I moved that we accepted the, the meetings from last, uh, July, our last meeting, holy Moses. That's the easiest one and I can't even get my words out.
The meeting.
I moved, we accept the meetings from seven, 1:25.
For a second, anyone?
Second.
Thank you, Peter. And I think we can just.
Hi, hi.
Say aye.
Hi.
So, aye. Minutes are ratified. Thank you. Staff updates, Rachel? Anything? Well, we have Jackie.
I was going to say the biggest update is of course that we have a new preservation planner, Jackie. Um, so look forward to receiving fun emails from her as well. Really excited to work with her, um, and yeah.
Jackie, do you want to tell us a little bit about what you've been doing before this or?
Yeah, yeah. So pleased to meet everyone and, and, you know, have been really glad to be working with the team, the design review team and everyone else within the office and looking forward to meet everyone. Um, just personally getting to know each and every one of you. Um, prior to coming here, I'm actually was born and raised in Florida, um, originally from like the Miami area. Um, I went to University of Florida, um, so I did history and political science there. And then, um, got a master's at Florida State University, specifically in history, uh, with a concentration in historic preservation. Um, so prior to this, I worked for, um, an urban planning, sort of the land use nonprofit in Florida statewide, where I was specifically focusing on a lot of historic preservation initiatives around the state of Florida. And yeah, made the, made the jump to Boston. I'm pretty familiar with it. Have friends and family here and, um, you know, living here in my short time has been nothing but enjoyable. Um, but yeah, excited to be here and, um, really, really excited to work with everyone.
Great. It's a lot different from Florida, isn't it, Jackie?
Certainly is. It's nicer summers, so.
Uh, just wait six months. Did you just move here? Or have you been here before?
I've been here before. Um, I was actually here in the winter, so got a taste of that. Um, I've been here in the winters before and, uh, no fun.
Still came, so welcome.
Okay, well, terrific.
Welcome.
Um.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Wait, Catherine, uh, before we do, um, Rachel, do you have any knowledge of um, the status of the wheelchair ramp constructions that are being done throughout the South End? Um, I'm assuming that all the places that we're seeing asphalt are going to be bricked, but there are places that the asphalt was really, really finished.
You have that curb cuts on the sidewalk?
Some, which gave me some concern whether that we're going to be having, uh, a legacy of asphalt.
Peter?
Definitely.
Peter, do you have like an intersection you could share with me?
They're all over the place, um, down Washington Street, down, um, say between the, from Blackstone and Franklin parks down toward the cathedral.
Peter, are you talking about yellow things?
Chumet Avenue between, between Union, um, at least between Union Park and Dwight Street, some of them, they're just, there, there are scores, dozens of them.
Catherine, I think to answer your question, I think Peter is referring to the asphalt, um, sort of, uh, accessible ramps that are connecting the street onto the sidewalk. Am I correct with that?
I think that's correct, yeah.
Well, he could also be talking about those horrible yellow things they made us put in that are all falling apart.
Right.
Um, if I may chime in, um, in while Rachel, um, was out of the office, um, Joe and I, and now I will be looping in Rachel, will be having a chat about ramp constructions. Um, it was specifically intended for another historic district. Uh, but it seems within the invitation that, uh, this individual sent who works for the city, she's a senior ADA manager for the city of Boston. Um, I will add Luke and Rachel to that meeting, um, so maybe we can ask more South End specific, uh, questions. Um, it is a general meeting regarding that sort of initiative to add those ramps.
Rachel and Jackie, a few years ago, this went through a whole process with all the historic districts and there was a subcommittee. I was not part of it. Um, I think John and Medeo was, but I don't remember.
John and I were.
You, you and John. I thought it came to a whole understanding and there was a memorandum of understanding for all of the historic districts about how the ramps would be done. Is that not true?
Yes.
Okay.
Why doesn't that apply?
This is all.
But I wondered, I wondered, looking at this seems to be a second generation of retrofit work going on from when we were on that subcommittee where the, the concrete wings, there just seems to be, so be it, but there seems to be a lot more concrete than was that originally anticipated. And now there's both more concrete and sizable vituuminis areas. And something that's not in our purview, but really annoys me as a resident. They're not modifying the curb slopes such that the bottom of the ramps are meeting the street. So they're actually having to build up a berm of asphalt in the street, which is going to impede storm drainage.
Interesting. So Peter, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. Um, Jackie, that's so interesting and coincidental that this has come up in another district. Um, so we'll definitely be sure to help with about their plans in the South End. Uh, we do review what happens on sidewalks. Um, so we'll go from there. And Peter, if you happen to think of any other examples that you didn't mention just now, feel free to send us those intersections because that's always really helpful when we talk to other, um, teams at the city, um, about work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm assuming this is, I'm assuming the vituuminus is temporary, but it looks so well, well done and finished that it causes me some concern.
Sure, we will look into it and then thank you as well for, um, reminding us about the memorandum, um, for this kind of work. Um, that was discussed in the past. Okay, interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well done. Uh, motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Don't move.
Aye.
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 Buddy, good hearing. Good night.
Good night. Good job, Catherine. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Good job, Catherine.
Very kind of you. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.